Let's go ahead and make the pledge. We'll get that up. Do you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is an annexation public hearing. This time I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Absolutely.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Sarah Hamer, who is our building commissioner and is the one who collects and presents these as ordinances. Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening. Hopefully you should receive, in your packets, I believe it's nine properties requesting for annexation into the city.
And just to kind of clarify for both the council and then everyone present, this is a public hearing. There's no action that will be taken in the council during this specific public hearing, but it is on the agenda of the public hearing as well. This is an opportunity for members of the community to be recognized, assuming they follow the necessary procedures of putting their name in for comment, and an opportunity for them to comment. My experience from the commission that I'm trying to use is that this was, this is a petition for annexation by property owner wishing to be annexed into the city of
Okay, so we will begin with the public hearing. We will do this in a single file order. And if somebody would like to be first, you may raise your hand and come to the mic. We will do this in a reasonable amount of time.
I know.
Okay, so we will, we will do this in a reasonable amount of time. Single file, if somebody has a comment on the annexation petition, please raise your hand and we'll call on you, come to the mic. You'll need to state your name and your address, and then what it is that your public opinion is concerned.
And the last thing I would note is that generally, this is not a, this is not a Q and A. It is an opportunity for you to make comment so that the council members can be aware of your opinions and/or concerns prior to any action they may take at the public meeting, which will immediately follow this public hearing.
Is there anyone here to speak on the annexation petition?
Okay, my name is Mr. Short. My address is 1996 West I-74 French Road. So we're in this area. What I kind of wanted to know is, is short answer, I think, is this the only meeting you're having for the annexation? Or will there be other meetings as to where you could ask questions like, if something's really gonna be put out there, or like, I don't know, runoff water and all that stuff? And the road's out there, what's gonna, is there another meeting to address situations like that?
So if there were to be a property built out there, or something built out there, there'd be other meetings for that? This is just about annexing the property? There's no building structure or any of that?
So yeah, later time, if something?
You would have to go through the typical building permit processes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this petition? Anyone else? Seeing our hearing done, would take?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
But still, I raise a second.
Hello? My name is Landon Kreitz over at 2605 North County Road, 250 West, just across the road from the annexing properties you're talking about. Can you guys comment on if there's any plans developmental wise to go there? Or why the city's looking to annex the property?
The city's not necessarily looking to, the, the request was made by property owners?
The individual property owners? Yeah, okay. I guess that's all on the set. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this petition? There has been a motion made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Daryl. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We will now move. Today is Tuesday, May 9, 2023. The time being 6:35 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table in the back of the room. Amy is unable to be with us this evening. We have Julie Herbert with us. You'll leave, please call to roll.
Jamie Kane.
Here.
Rick M. Sullard.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Iada McKenzie.
Here.
Daryl Polling.
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from April 11th, 2023, public hearing. Any added additions or corrections? If not, we'll take a motion to approve that as presented. Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Daryl. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Jamie has stiffed. You all received a copy of the minutes from the 2023 meeting. Any added additions or corrections? If not, we'll take a motion to approve those as presented.
Some.
Motion's been made by Rick, second by Iada. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate, aye? Those opposed? Jamie has stiffed. We do have, as mentioned last month, the appointment of a school board member. Steve Stringer is with us to see. Steve, I chaired your information with the council, but if you'd please come forward, introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your background.
Good evening, my name is Steve Stringer. I've lived here in Greensburg for over 25 years. My background is I'm a CPA, work for a public accounting firm, a loan company over in Columbus. And prior to that, I've served on other board capacities specifically within the finance and accounting kind of expertise. So looking forward to the opportunity to serve on the board.
Steve and I had a very good conversation about his connections to the community and his involvement in different capacities. And I believe his background would be helpful to the Greensburg Community School Board.
Thank you.
Any questions for Steve? If not, take a motion to approve Steve's appointment to the school board for board year term.
Second.
Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Jamie. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Under Old Business, I had Rick on here. I don't think he's joined us this evening, but per our discussion last month, I am still interested in the council's opinions and direction as it relates to energy savings guarantees and discussions.
I mean, I think there's lots of concerns with this. Not to speak for everyone, but the fact that it would be a 20-year loan. I think this is a market that's going to advance a lot in the next five to 10 years. And if we put ourselves in this position, we own for 20 years, and then in five years, something better's coming along where we're still invested and we won't have that money to go somewhere else. I think there's other concerns as well, but I don't believe.
Fair enough. Any other opinions of that, council?
I'm getting the same opinion as Jamie. I just hope that this is the top person spending this month. I'm in.
For the record?
My, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
My concern is we do have other loans out there right now. We have, I should say, projects. We have some pretty big projects going on. And that, which is concerning me to add another big project.
I just feel like the time is all. How much is the time that's in place right now?
I will send those to the, we are not interested. Any further on that? Okay. We will move to new business. I saved John the trip here to light update from the Veritas Group. Obviously, we have our groundbreaking on Saturday at 10:30. I invite all of you and anyone in the public to attend as you would like. It will be at 10:30 at the site on North Broadway. Our updates include the IDM permit and state construction design release have been received for the fire station project. The street departments drawings have been sent to the state for construction design release as of the end of April. For our schedule, Myron Nation did mobilize on site. So if you've been by there in a few days, you will see that their trailer is there and their site superintendent has been on site. Chibi Excavating has also been on site doing some work, including erosion control. They'll begin stripping the topsoil this week, if not next. And then the IDM building demo permit is expected to be returned next week. And the building is expected to start coming down on the 20th. And we do have the process of starting the constructing of the building pads by the end of this month. And then the street department steel is still on delivery schedule for the middle of late June. Veritas is working alongside Chibi, Myron Nation, and Rutterbaum to develop the master schedule in order to hit our milestones to reach the construction for the building pads. We have our first construction meeting on site this Thursday with all of our parties to discuss logistics and the next steps. And then, as again, as a reminder, our groundbreaking is on Saturday. We have sent out the fits and finishes and equipment RFP for the end of the month that will be due. And so we've already received some feedback from that. I do believe I've included a copy of that in your folder if you'd like to. I added it late yesterday or this morning. Any questions that I save them the trip of that? Any, any questions on that? Okay. We will move then to new business. Sarah Hamer, building commissioner. Ordinance 2023-05. This is the petition for annexation. Good evening once again.
So actually, you received in your packets ordinance 2023-05 on the annexation territory to the city of Greensburg. And that was the map that shows the location of all of those properties. In this also, in this ordinance is all of the petitions from the homeowners. And also, the ordinance is change zoning for that area as well, which that will go before the planning commission next month. They will make their red anndiction back to the council.
Any questions for Sarah on 2023-05?
I'll make a motion to approve 2023-05 on first reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Daryl. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate, aye? Those opposed? And then, as it relates to Resolution 23-03, that will come back next month after plan reviews, is that correct?
23-03 is the fiscal plan resolution.
I'm sorry, yes. Go for it.
Resolution number 2023-03 is adopting a fiscal plan for the demarcation of that territory. I believe I saw, there it is, as we hear from the financials. If you have any questions regarding the fiscal plan, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to answer those questions.
I will say it's very basic, and the petition is being filed by the property owners. So that's right. It's a requirement by law. Any questions for Sarah on Resolution 23-03?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-03.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate, aye? Those opposed? Now 23-04.
Okay. Resolution 2023-04 is a petition, or sorry, a resolution initiating a proposal to amend the zoning map of the city of Greensburg. I would like to receive a motion to recommend that this be forwarded to the planning commission for review. And I will bring back to the council in June with the planning commission's recommendation. This is, again, all part of the same annexation package.
Do you need a motion to recommend to the planning commission or just to table it? Typically, that's how it's done. Yeah, I just go to the planning commission, one way or the other. So my recommendation probably is just to table. Table that to give a resolution to after we receive the plan recommendation.
I'll make that motion to table 2023-04 until I do the planning commission's.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Daryl. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate, aye? Those opposed? Okay, thanks.
I'm normally not a big of this one. Okay, a couple of things I'd like to talk to the council about. There will be programs that I'm really excited about introducing to the citizens of Greensburg. First of all, I'll talk about is a curb appeal program. The mayor had approached me several months ago, I believe it was, and checked into this in another city that has this program. As you got all that information, I want to sit here and read over it a bit to you in regards to the funding of this program that we would like to kick off and start this year. We talked about the money's coming from the GIS specialist, an amount of $10,000. And then the sidewalk program, which we'll talk about here in a minute, that will come from someone at somewhere else. Then, next year, it will be figured into our budget at $10,000 to continue hopefully each year after that. The first year normally is a little bit slower here. The city of Seymour does this. And it's a very successful program. The first year, they said, is very, a little bit slower until work gets out, we'll learn more about the program. But then the years after that has been more, people applying and stuff. So I can, I'm more than happy to answer questions on this. And hopefully everybody's had time to review it.
I think a couple of points worth making is a reimbursement program. The work has to be completed and it's a priority first. Has to be inspected by our city staff. It has to meet all the standards. It has to be, it's a pretty robust application.
Yes.
So it is reimbursement. So it's not money out without the work being completed. I mean, it's already budgeted funds. And it is something that is, it doesn't necessarily have to go beyond that. It is a, once the funds are expended, that's it. So it is kind of a competitive rate process. The funds that are available are from a position that hasn't been filled. We probably want to keep that and go forward. We can have a discussion about it. But it does seem to be competitive and it's a good opportunity for us to offer that.
Yes, and we're working very hard in our office with code enforcement. So I'm excited about this for people that would like to do some maintenance and for aesthetic purposes of the property they owned. Oh, I'm sorry. Any benefits, if it is land, they don't have, it doesn't have, it can be a landlord, client for it. It can be the actual person that lives in the home that owns the property as well. They have to have an income of $100,000 or less. And the last proof of that, probably by way of a tax return, technically would be the easiest way. And they can apply for it. Once they apply for it, they apply for it this year. They have to wait a full 12 months before they can maybe apply to do something else to their home next year. And if they get to get, so we would reimburse $500. That's 50% over some other thousand. If they would go together with their immediate neighbor for a project that would, they would do together on both of their homes, then we would approve that for up to maximum amount of $750 with this 50% of a project cost after $1,500. And have they?
Also worth noting, it has to be a kind of a fit to the house. So like annual permits don't count.
Flower costs.
Furniture, chairs, those kinds of things. It needs this kind of statement. If I had your question?
So you sort of, if there were like neighbors, I mean, what would be the difference between them both filling out an application? You do an application for a hundred for one property owner?
Because we would reimburse more if there's, if they go together. Let's say you and your neighbor, well, you need maybe some new landscaping, both of you do. So go together because we're going to give you, reimburse you more money that, that way. Like up to $750. That we give maximum amount for $1,500. I think it's a great incentive for the community and for improvements, you know, that people just maybe don't have, you know, would be more eager to do, knowing that they're going to be reimbursed for some of it. We have, we haven't had a credit report or anything yet, but Kristin designed for me a brochure on the front grid. So we will, you know, if this gets approved, then we will be sure to get these out in the community. The owner of our website will have them in our office. It starts ready. Has all the information on that.
Other questions for Sarah? Think it would be a great opportunity to demo it out this year, try it out, see what the response is, learn from it. Sarah and I both take in pretty aggressive reviews of the, the applications and the guidelines to try to make sure that we're protected. I think it's worth trying.
The first year, which would be one of the fastest, the max funded, $10,000.
Yeah. I believe we base that number off of Seymour?
Yes.
I mean, and they said they, like in their first year, they didn't get there.
Yes, and that, and that money then would go back.
Yeah, it's, it's general fund dollars, so it goes back into, it's not like it's a dedicated fund.
So would be its own fund, just going to be?
Correct. I, I think the idea would be, because this year we can't create, we don't want to create, that can be fun, right? We're going to use already appropriated dollars in their office budgets to do the preparation. See how it goes, try it out. And then if it's working, or if we think we want to succeed or continue with it in the 2024 budget, it will probably be a line item. It won't be its own fund. And if the dollars aren't used, it goes back to where it was funded, it came from. But this saves us, obviously, it's already budgeted money. We don't have to do an additional preparation. It's in the same office, just the same financial number. Any other questions for Sarah? Thoughts? Entertained a motion to approve this as presented?
Some.
Motion's been made by Daryl.
Second.
Second by Iada. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. And the next part of that petition.
Okay, the next part would be a shared cost sidewalk and curb program. You've received all that information as well. We do not pay for sidewalk replacement for people. So this is, would be a new, new program along the same line, well, kind of along the same lines currently program reimbursement, that kind of thing. It says, you know, how much do we pay for square foot of sidewalk? And for linear foot, a curb. A lot of this would go through Ron. But again, it's kind of the same way of the application. Drawings back, you may, where the sidewalk, you go back, kind of thing. And it would be approved or sold wrong then, I think, as far as those kind of things. Now, a lot of this program right now, we do if people replace sidewalk. The street department will go, if requested, and remove the sidewalk. If they are part of this program, they can reimburse, who will not? They're responsible for the.
This is also only applicable to public right-of-way sidewalks. So from the back of the sidewalk up to your front porch is not to be included. It needs to be available for public use.
Correct.
Say homeowner can apply for both.
There's two separate programs.
So this, the $4 per square foot, is that, I mean, I don't know what it costs to tear it out. Now, is it, is it going to be, you know, is it going to be more cost effective for you to not do it, not fill out the application and have the city come and tear it out? Or, and then you replace it? Or, do you understand what I'm saying?
Sure, yeah, I do understand. I don't know, Ron's more of a sidewalk expert than I am, so.
So $4 per square foot is about half the current cost of sidewalk construction, including demolition of the existing sidewalk. So it's similar to what some communities have that are referred to as 50/50 programs.
Do you understand what she was asking?
It, it's half the cost, more or less, her situation.
And that's what the reason for. That's what we base that, that.
Yes. And the restoration of the underlying ground is the full package. It's the only exception to that the city will replace curbs ramps and alley approaches. That should not be, either of those two activities will be included for the homeowner.
Partially due to the reason we're responsible for ADA compliance of our cross ramps and we want to be sure that those are met. And then also, we do those already when we redo streets. But at most.
It's a requirement of any CCNG expenditure.
So that cost is almost already, is ours already. And we have the responsibility to meet ADA compliance. So we'll take that. There are also, I don't remember, I don't think there's a max that a homeowner can apply for because some people live on corner lots or they don't have excessive amounts of sidewalks. So there isn't a cap, but that's why the, the dollars per square foot come in. Again, there's a budget of $25,000 for this year of funds from our already budgeted sidewalk line item. We're just taking this opportunity to potentially turn our $25,000 into at least 50 in sidewalk improvements in the community by working with homeowners or property owners that want to do that.
Yes.
But again, an already budgeted funding source. Any other questions for Sarah or Ron? Take a motion to approve as presented? Motion's been made by Rick, second by Jamie. All those in favor, say in front of the Senate, aye? Those opposed? Thank you, Sarah.
I am not done.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, Ron, you have ordinance 2023-06, which is the vacation of the alley on the half of the first.
Traffic, the city's traffic committee has received a petition from the First Christian Church to vacate the alley running west from Broadway on the south side of the church hopper and or from Broadway to the first north-south alley. West Broadway. The traffic committee did review that. And forward to the council with a unanimous recommendation to support the vacation of the alley. The alley in question is the one shown here shaded in pink. You notice that it does not go past the life center building and only goes to the life center building. The alley north of the one in question that goes between the church and their life center has previously been vacated. So the alley currently only comes from central on the south and goes up to the alley in question. It would then turn west and continue.
Agree that the remaining being a public access?
Yes. So if this vacation is approved, the church owns the parcel south and parcel north. So the whole alley would become their property. If there are any utilities in there, there would be easement retained for those utilities. And I do not know whether our utilities in that have law or third law.
The, the remainder of that alley is being left as a public access alley because there are properties that order up to it.
Yes.
And restriction of people's property from the back would be an issue if we continue west.
Correct. Yeah, there is.
And there, there is no, because it is a public alley, it is open for public traffic.
There is a barrage, right?
That's okay. The important part is that.
There is a garage here that uses that alley for access. And then there are other property here and then other properties further west uses the alley for our access to their property. That would be maintained.
Any questions from Ron?
So it's not really an alley, it's all paved.
The church or someone has paved through the alley.
It's all paved.
And quite frankly, they use it like it's served already.
So, so if you come from Broadway to the edge of that, that and make a right between the two, that's already closed, right?
Yes.
Don't you see? So if you make a left, that's fine, right? It's still accessible, you got garages there.
Central Avenue is one-way westbound, Hendrick Street is one-way eastbound.
And have, have all those property owners been?
Every property owner in that block is certified to be able to come this position.
We have one member from the public who is here to speak on this topic.
The property directly south of that, though, is that also owned by the church? It looks like it's the parking lot there.
Yes, that is owned by the church. The one south of their life center across the alley is also owned by the church, but it would never become, with this action, would never become, can take you this through their other pieces.
Do they indicate whether or not you plan on closing the entrance part of Broadway and the parking lot?
I, some time back had a conversation about that. I believe their interest is improving their parking situation. And the conversation I had was how, look, one best design parking in that available space, where would you put driveways? I envision that the current alley might be closed, but would likely be replaced with a different degress, egress point in the north or south or both.
Is there, if there's vacation, what you meant to do to be considered, is there any way we could, but can be, or if there has to be, then you can aggressively address Ron, does it off of Broadway? Because if you close Broadway, I'm going to bring my next concern up, because I've been out there and I've held out by some property owners or whatever. The concern is the amount of traffic that leaves the church. It exits through the alley on through the west Hendricks and the alley south on the west central. And here regardless of whether, whether we improve this or don't improve it, if we improve it, it's not going to really change anything because they're using it like they would it now. Someone was blacktopped before like they would now. But if you, but if you take away the entrance off of Broadway, that could potentially do a lot more decrease traffic through those portions to get access to the church. And then also, I haven't yet, is there any way that we could potentially control traffic so that the church traffic doesn't exit on down through the alley where they have, where the church traffic has to exit the current alleys that are part of their parcels?
Could by ordinance make the alley one way?
I would say that would be the, the only thing, I, I don't think if you're, if you vacated, I don't think you can give a conditional vacation. I think it has to be, you know, you're vacating or you're not vacating. But I do think that you could enact ordinance with regard to, I have to think of how to word it, but, I mean, obviously you have the ability to control access to your city streets. So in terms of how, I don't know that you can draft a specific ordinance for one, I think you'd have to draft ordinance in the entirety. Because really, once you vacated as an alley, it's no longer an alley. I mean, it just, it just becomes part of the parcel. They have the ability to do whatever they want, really. You could potentially. I don't know. The answer to your question, Kevin, is I don't really know. I don't think you can, I don't think you have a conditional vacation.
You know, the traffic flow is not going to, and it may be a problem if you vacated and said yes, the traffic's going to be the same as it has been for a long time unless Broadway gets closed off.
Agreed.
If you close Broadway off, then it's a whole different capital, how the traffic's going to flow in and out of there.
If you close Broadway off, I think you get a fire truck on the backside.
That's what I would turn on before the fire can stop.
I think you, you'd struggle to get a fire truck, maybe, I mean, you could get one, but it might, well, may not be easy.
I don't know if closing an entrance to a parking lot, you'd have to come in front of any of the bodies that we have currently, I don't believe it would. So it'd be, it would be no different than if, what's that?
They wanted to put a new curb cut in. Does it have to?
A, a new curb cut would, absolutely. But if, if all I was doing was closing off one way to get into my property, unless it violated some aspect of public safety code provisions of the ordinance, that would be the only, then it would be, then like you mentioned, it would be a public safety issue, particularly in light of the nature of the building. I don't think there is a way to just prevent them from closing their access to property unless they're sure it's essential. But Ron's correct, that Central is a one-way, one-way street, so you would be, I suppose potentially if you created a nuisance through closing, I mean, the city as a, as a street owner on an adjacent street could potentially have a nuisance come, if you created a public safety issue or a traffic flow issue based on what they're trying to do. But the only thing I can think of right now as I say.
If the issue is traffic exiting the church due west through the alley, you could, by ordinance, designate the alley one-way eastbound, no one would be exiting that direction after doing something.
If, if it was still an alley.
You're talking about the alley west.
Oh, the other part of it, yes, you could control the other part of it. The part that's, you could certainly control the other parts that are, that remain public right-of-ways by ordinance.
And that would come with its own set of concerns, maybe.
And the enforceability of that.
I think it would be enforceable.
Just.
The effort, the effort.
Our resources dedicated to enforcing that would fall lower on the right. Correct.
Well, I don't normally like to assume, but I'm assuming that there's a reason why they want to vacate this alley.
Split parking configuration.
Well, I, that's it.
Yeah, so, I mean, even if they, if they put parking spaces in there, they're still closing up, closing it off.
I think what Kevin was getting at is.
If you pull in, you can't, you can't, if there's cars parked in there, you're still not going to be able to.
They're going to give a lane for the cars to get in and out, so, so they're, what Kevin was getting at is maybe they make a park in the center, but they, maybe they make a new curb cut on either side of that lane so the cars can get in and out. Maybe. Or maybe they block it completely off from Broadway. Said you had somebody, you just need to, you know, let them speak here.
Gene Germanic Man of one thirty-six west central is here. Good evening, Gene.
Good evening, Mayor. Hi, I just have some concerns, I'm not necessarily against them closing that section, but you need to take some real consideration in the area. Most of the neighbors have all used that Broadway access over the years, and it sits on a high point to where you can see both directions on Broadway without getting hit pulling out of there. On Hendrick Street, which is one-way towards Broadway, pull up there and look at the intersection and you can't see. Okay, so it's not safe. Central's one-way west, Hendricks is one-way east. We have Jackson Street that feeds into Central, which comes right at our alley that we live on and that we have to take care of, okay? And the city's made several decisions of late that have just made that alley more like a street than an alley. And one of them was when they allowed them to pave over that alley section, because when they striped it, they striped the parking spaces right in the alley entrance off of Broadway. And then they put a arrow to shoot them down our alley when they vacate that lot. The drug rehab center is located on our lot, they have an excessive amount of traffic. The amount of traffic and the safety of this issue, and I can understand why they might want to vacate that section, because where they put the parking spaces, people who have lived in this area for years and years and years have always used that access, so they're still trying to use that access, but they go around the parking spaces and that's just unsafe. You know, it probably never should have been allowed to be closed in the first place, but it is creating a problem over in the area. And if you pass it, if you decide to pass it, I would really somehow like to see a block to keep them from exiting all their traffic down that alley. I don't know how it can be done, or if it can be done, but it sure would help with the traffic. Or if you make this decision, maybe the city should take it over as a street because it's got plenty of traffic on it. And that's my concerns. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
And you're talking about the, the, what's coming off of, of Jackson there?
See, you've got Broadway here.
Right.
This is Central.
Right.
Okay, Jackson.
Which alley are you talking about this?
Well, this is, yeah, th- this is the alley that I live on, this parking lot feeds into that alley. If you come on across, if they leave it open and they close that entrance to Broadway and you make it one-way east, they're going to have to go out either on the other two exits that they currently have, which are north and south on that property, or they would have to come down ours. You could, they, they just, if you, how many of you have actually looked at this?
Very familiar with it.
Well, you might be familiar, but if you don't look at the specific problems. And I think Kevin can testify to that because he was out and looked at it.
I, I see the problems with it.
Well, there's like.
I mean, so if basically you cut, if, if, if they were to cut off Broadway, then the only way.
Well, they have these.
To access.
North and south.
Through alleys.
Well, they have north and south alleys.
Is that correct?
Yeah, north and south alleys, and the north one had been vacated already. The south is their property, but then it comes behind Bossfax Garage and right empties at our alley then, what actually goes across to our alley, and there's more houses down that way. But if it could just be closed somehow to where Bossfax are, so that he can still get in his garage, but that they can't empty their whole parking lot on our alley.
They've got a curb cut there on Central Street too, right, where their parking lot's at.
Yes.
Yes, if you close Broadway, it's still accessible through Central.
And my concern is they can do whatever they want with that once it's vacated because they can then lock that off of Broadway. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we, do we need to make a motion to pass it or do we deny it, or was it, I don't know.
Make a motion.
I don't want to pass it.
Make a motion.
Well, I guess we make, we've got to make the motion to pass it and then we need to deny it.
Let's say, you can't make a motion to deny something. You can make a motion to approve it and then vote against it, but.
I'll make the.
How much of the procedure, real quick, a motion.
I'm with the traffic committee, I sit through and, and I'm one of the guys that said in favor of, that once I went out there and actually walked in and looked at it, I mean, if they were to come to the, if they were to come to us and, you know, we want to vacate the alley, that with our plan, we want to close Broadway and we want to put two degress, egress points in so we can have traffic flow through. It makes more sense, my fear is now, actually, what I've been looking at is fact that, I mean, how do you control the traffic? Traffic's going to flow the past, it'll be like water, it's going to flow the past through resistance. My fear is if, if they don't, actually, they've been down, they've closed the Broadway entrance back since it created like.
That's my concern. Then the only access to the parking lot is through alleys. Not getting in all of the, all of the major streets.
We could make a better decision if we had someone, maybe from the bunch to.
I think there's a time limit that if we deny this, it has to wait, that record I have.
I do not believe so, I think they could repetition immediately.
Rather table this to see if they can provide us some more information instead of.
And specifically invite them.
Yeah.
I wasn't very concerned.
Hold on, wait.
Motion, table twenty-two-three dash zero six.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Jeff. Okay. Now, twenty-two-three dash zero six, which is another alley that you could share, I mean, you have two members of the public who've built a park, so that now they're running through this.
Yeah, yeah. So this is an alley that runs south off of Railroad Street, the key, Franklin Street and East Street. The petitioner, their name stays made, has, owns the property up here, here, and then they also own all of the property east of the alley. They have commented, they have some issue with vandalism, they would like to fence the whole thing to address their vandalism issue. The traffic committee met actually the same day as the previous petition and made a unanimous vote in favor of the vacation.
Any questions for Ron on this one? Okay, everybody here from my members of the public. Destin Smith, about two-twenty-five seven East Street, give it to Destin.
Hi, thank you. I am opposed to the vacating of the alley here and would ask you to do the same, two-twenty-five, this would be here, the residence that I own and reside at. This is my garage, which accesses back here. Obviously can be accessed from McKee Street, but the, as you look at the picture, you see an alley that, you know, on a satellite photo like this, you see it written as an alley, the, the one that runs east and west from Franklin to East Street. Making that, if you were coming out of my garage trying to make a left to go out to Franklin, that's not really a doable turn, nor would turn, making the right, coming back in without putting a, a wheel in somebody's yard. putting a, a wheel in somebody's yard. Going out the other way, when you would come out on the East Street, there's quite a drop-off there at the end. My big concern is that I have on occasion needed to pull a trailer into my garage, and also, I don't believe he's here, but my, my alley neighbor across the street often pulls trailers back there, and it'd be extraordinarily dangerous to try and back out a trailer onto McKee Street, and there would be no way to possibly make either of those turns without the access we currently have going on and out to, on out to Railroad Street. So that's, is my biggest concern, the cross alley, again, if somebody might look at it, thinks it's, might be sufficient, but it, it is not a sufficient option, particularly in anything larger. I didn't even think about, too, you guys have brought up a lot of good points on the previous one, the fire truck didn't get back there, not one of the bigger trucks, if that was fenced off. The main thing that I see here is that we've got, there are, well, really, four garages, two of them kind of face the, the east-west alley, but there are, we've got four garages, and then one other gentleman that does park, he has a gravel area to park back there. Basically, I see...